Thank you for your patience, we're waiting on Commissioner Evans to get logged in on telephone, so it'll be just a few more minutes. Good evening, I'd like to call this September 16th, 2013, meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners to Order. I'd like to call on Commissioner Billy King for our invocation.
A few weeks ago, we were up in Greensboro attending the County Commissioners State Conference. And one of the features of that conference that I've truly enjoyed was the activity of young people. And so this evening, I put that into practice by asking a young minister to come and deliver our invocation. So this time, I'd like to call upon Reverend Robin K. Monk, youth pastor, First Baptist Moore Street, for our invocation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Chairman Keefe and our Commissioners Melvin, Council King, we've got by technology Evans, and Edge and Faircloth in their absence. I do count it an honor to be here and promise I've been raised as a good Baptist minister and won't be before you long. But I did want to read a scripture and do an invocation, so I'll be reading from the Gospel according to Mark, chapter seven, verses one through eight. "The Pharisees and some of the teachers of the law, who had come from Jerusalem gathered around Jesus, and saw some of his disciples eating food with hands that were defiled, that is unwashed. The Pharisees and all the Jews do not eat unless they give their hands a ceremonial washing, holding to the tradition of the elders. When they come from the marketplace, they do not eat unless they wash, and they observe many other traditions, such as the washing of cups, pitchers, and kettles. So the Pharisees and teachers of the law asked Jesus, 'Why don't your disciples live according to the tradition of the elders, instead of eating their food with defiled hands?' He replied, 'Isaiah was right when he prophesied about you hypocrites, as it is written. These people honor me with their lips, but their hearts are far from me. They worship me in vain; their teachers are merely human rules.' You have let go of the commands of God and are holding on to human tradition. Yes, I realize this is not church or the house of worship, but for this moment, it is a house of prayer, and it represents a great house of service to the people, for the people, and by the people. Let us pray. Lord God, how we thank you for another opportunity to be on this earth, in this great city, in this great county, to serve one another, to represent you, to shine your light in any way that we can. Lord, I ask a special blessing on this meeting this evening, on all who are in attendance, for every voice and concern, for every personal issue, professional and county one. We know that, God, you are able to hold it all in your hand, and able to provide a refreshing solution to each and every situation. God, I ask a special blessing on our Chairman Keefe, on Council, excuse me, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Edge, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner King, Commissioner Melvin, and every other person that serves in this special ministry to the people of this county. We thank you for their positions, for their season, for their seat of service. We ask, God, most of all, that true will be done, that each and every person would know that they are valued in this community, and that as we serve each other, we are truly serving you. We also ask a special blessing of encouragement on each Commissioner, on all those that are working for and by the people. Finally, God, we ask a special blessing of provision, of prosperity, and especially of peace. It's in Christ Jesus' name that I thank you and bless you. Amen.
Amen.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we sustain, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Monk, and we appreciate those words. At this time, I do need to announce that Commissioner Faircloth and Commissioner Edge are traveling and will not be with us tonight, but Commissioner Evans, we have by telephone, Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Evans is with us by telephone tonight. At this time, as in tradition, we have a public comment period, where we listen to your needs and your issues, and we can pretty much talk about anything. And if I could ask the county manager right now to go with the standards of the public comment period.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the public comment period shall last for a period of 15 minutes. The time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute time limit is attained. And we ask speakers to come to the podium as their name is called, and to address the board from the, actually from the lecture.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin. Madam Clerk, we have speakers.
We have two speakers this evening.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker, please?
Our first speaker is Mr. Archie Behringer.
Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Keefe and Cumberland County Commissioners.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank you for the privilege of being here tonight and for having this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Archie Behringer, and I represent the Friends of the Sandhills State Veterans Cemetery. My co-chair, Mr. George Breeze, could not be with us this evening, as he is out of town, traveling on business, but he did ask me to bring you his very best regards. Under a bill sponsored by Senator Wesley Meredith, Governor McCoy appropriated $125,000 in this year's budget for repairs, renovations, and upgrades to be made at the Sandhills State Veterans Cemetery. It is to be used for the committal structure, where funeral services are held. The committal structure is a concrete structure, open on all sides, that needs to be enclosed, air-conditioned, and heated. It is extremely cold in the winter, and hot in the summer. I would submit to you that this is in no way, any way in which our veterans' families should have to say goodbye to their loved ones, and to those who have served us so well. Tonight, we need some additional funds. We need matching funds. Chairman Keefe has already made a significant contribution. Mr. Chairman, please know that we deeply appreciate your donation. There was a saying that some gave all, but all gave some. And I believe that this is an opportunity to give something back to our veterans and families that have supported us here in Fayetteville and Tumbling County over the years. Ms. Mary Holmes has been so kind to provide us a link with the Cumberland County Foundation website, and that address is www.cumberlandcf.org. And whenever you go to this website, just click on the button to the left, and that will bring up the State Veterans Cemetery. Again, I will repeat, www.cumberlandcf.org, and then click on the button or the link to your left. Also, if you desire to make a contribution, you may mail a check to the Cumberland Community Foundation, PO Box 2345, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28302. Please allow me to repeat, Cumberland Community Foundation, PO Box 2345, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28302. All checks should be earmarked for the State Veterans Cemetery. And I would also like to take this opportunity to ask you, our Cumberland County Commissioners, for a donation for the citizens of Fayetteville and Cumberland County who do not have the money to give. And finally, I would ask that I be allowed to leave some additional self-addressed envelopes with Ms. White for those who might want to make a contribution here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, I submit to you that I believe that the love for Fayetteville and Cumberland County is best reflected by the love that we show for our veterans and their families. I want to thank each of you very much in advance for donating to this most worthy cause.
Thank you.
Will there be any questions, please?
Thank you Reverend, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you Chairman Keefe, appreciate it very much. God bless you all.
Our next speaker is Ms. Margie Whitehead.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Whitehead.
Good evening, how are you all?
Wonderful.
I'm here not to fuss today, but to thank you for working so diligently with the parks and recreation to get a park in Linden, which is much needed. Everybody is excited. The children can't wait. And I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Gibson with Parks and Recreation and Commissioner Evans. He's like big daddy to us out in Linden. When we have problems, we bring it to Commissioner Evans, and he responds and resolves it. But my purpose for being here today is that I want to thank you on behalf of the citizens and the other 8,000 residents in Linden. I know the newspapers mentioned that there was only 155 in Linden, but believe me, there's thousands of people that are waiting for this park, and once again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitehead. Madam Clerk, are there any more speakers?
We have no further speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. This will conclude our public comment period. And at this time, I get the privilege of making a special recognition. So, I'm gonna come down here. So many times, we try to do the best job we can for the citizens of Cumberland County, and that goes everywhere from health and welfare to maintenance and just being supportive, because the purpose of government is to take care of the citizens as best we can. It is really my pleasure tonight to recognize one of our own for a consistent pattern of excellence in their work. And at this time, every year for the past 22 years, Cumberland County has been recognized for its financial commitment in reporting, and that is directly reflected on our deputy county manager, Ms. Amy Cannon. And she is gonna tell you, her staff, and everybody else, but leadership starts at the top, and Ms. Cannon has been there, and we have, we're very proud of the financial reporting and how we treat the citizens' money. So at this time, Amy, I would like to formally congratulate you and your staff for everything that you've done. And if you'd like to say a few words about what this honor and what it is, what it means to Cumberland County, I've done my best, but I'm sure you can do it a lot better.
Thank you Chairman Keefe and Commissioners. The excellence in financial reporting is not an easy or a simple task. It takes the commitment of the departments, the finance staff, and the internal auditor, a tremendous amount of hours, but it's something that is important to this county, and it's something that we're very proud of. It is, I will accept this on behalf of the many people that do the work, and I just want to tell Mr. Martin and the board, it's been my honor to serve the county as Finance Director for the last 15 years.
To continue on with recognition, I'd like to call on Commissioner Billy King for two presentations, actually.
It is indeed a pleasure for me to, at this time, recognize our Health Department. Being a part of that great board, I'm keenly aware of many of the things that are going on within that department. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Rod Jenkins, please come forward, is our Deputy Director.
Buck's here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Buck. Come on Buck. You're easy on ya, I missed you. Come on up here.
I didn't see him.
I didn't see, he's supposed to be the boss, right?
I didn't see him.
I want to just recognize our Health Department for the fact that they have recently seen state accreditation. I have oftentimes messed that word up, but tonight, we got it right, Hank. I want to just recognize them, we are very encouraged, and we are very proud of the work that Rod did, is kind of leading the team, as well as Buck providing the overall leadership for this achievement and this recognition. It's my understanding that this goes, this lasts until 2017. So, we're very proud of this agency, we know they work very hard, they put a lot of hours in, and we, as Commissioners, just want to recognize their outstanding achievement. So at this time, on behalf of my fellow Commissioners, Cumberland County Health Department is hereby awarded accreditation 2013-2017. Congratulations. Good deal, you got that?
Great.
Good deal, congratulations. Do you want to say anything?
Just want to thank, thank Mr. Wilson for providing the leadership, and thank you to the support of Mr. King, and as well as the other members of the Board of Health. Accreditation has not been easy, it's been a long time coming, and it's kind of hard to believe that this is the first time Cumberland County has been accredited. But the staff and just everybody who had a handle on it, I just want to say publicly, thank you. Thought I was gonna get out of having to say anything. Thanks to Rod and the staff. We have a tremendous staff at the Health Department, about 300 strong. We work really hard to provide the best service to the citizens, and this is a sign of the good service that we continue to provide through accreditation in the process, and we'll see you in 2017.
You did good with your hands.
Thank you, congratulations. I didn't see you either. Thank you, congratulations.
While I'm here, Mr. Tom Kane. Certificate of appreciation presented to Tom Kane for outstanding dedication and service on the Parks and Recreation Board. Come forward, Mr. Kane. I know you won't say a word.
A1. It has been one of the greatest privileges and honors to represent the citizens of Cumberland County on this board for eight years. I was instrumental in helping the ladies at Linden get their park in and what have you. Mr. Gibson has been a great fellow to work for and work with. It's, like I say, it's a privilege and an honor to spend eight years with him. I'm gonna miss it, but I appreciate the opportunity y'all gave me to serve, and if anything else comes along you need a, bend me to run, fine, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Kane, thank you Commissioner King. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Evans? All right.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Evans?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
If you don't mind, I would like to say something in regards to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Evans?
Thank you, I'm not going to argue long, but I would like to thank the Commissioners for moving on the matter to DOT for Pinpoint and Draper Roads. Hopefully, and prayerfully, that real soon, something will be done to accommodate and to make the quality of life for those individuals that reside on those roads much better. Thank you so much to my colleagues.
You got that, and for those of you who are not able to hear, Mr. Evans wanted to speak the appreciation to the residents on Pinpoint and Draper Roads and the approval of that on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is the public hearings. First item is case number P-02-08. Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, sir, there's nobody signed up for or against this particular case. This is the revocation of a conditional use overlay or conditional use zoning. The ordinance says if it's not acted upon, and the property owner does not exercise his right for that overlay, that the zoning, it must come off, and the owner of the property has no problem. They just never got around to doing it and don't intend on doing it. So your motion should be to revoke the...
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
There are no speakers, I will close the public hearing, and staff recommendation is to revoke the conditional use and rezone to A1.
I move that we approve the staff recommendation to revoke CU and rezone to A1.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Evans? Mr. Evans?
Your petition has lost the connection, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, at this time, if you would, raise your hands. Okay? We have a majority that has voted, but we'll ask Mr. Evans for his vote when we reconnect. Next item in the agenda is the uncontested conditional zoning case, the case number P-13-33. Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, sir, again, there's no opposition. The planning board recommended approval, and this will also clear up some zoning lines and straighten them out with respect to the property lines also.
Okay.
Second. Okay, this time, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
We have no speakers.
I will close the public hearing. Second, okay. There's been a motion to approve the RR, that's CZ for daycare, and the planning board is also recommending, the staff has recommended that also. All those in favor, Commissioner Evans?
I, yes.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Thank you. The next item, item C, 3C, is at a request from the petitioner to delay this case for 30 days. Madam Clerk, are there speakers in this case?
There are no speakers.
Okay, then we'll delay this for 30 days as a request of the petitioner. We do not need a vote on that, is that correct? Okay. Next item is, thank you, Mr. Lloyd, next item, minimum housing code enforcement, Mr. Hatcher.
Yeah.
Mr. Hatcher, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth of the whole thing?
Affirm. Give us a second here.
Mr. Chairman, while the screen's coming up, this may be a moot point, but since the public hearing on 13/35 had been advertised for this evening, and now it's been delayed, perhaps, I'll ask county attorney, if a motion to reschedule the hearing for a month from now may prevent having to re-advertise for this hearing, I don't know if that will meet the legal standard or not.
If it's to a date, sir, if you're talking about the...
Well...
21st, I guess.
I guess the question is, would they have had to say the date to fulfill that requirement? The motion was for 30 days, but formally, they probably should have said the date.
The third Monday in October will be the 21st, I think. First Monday is...
Hello?
Are we gonna need a motion on that for that?
I think you might, in order to set a date, sir, and then I would suggest it be October 21st, which is your third Monday in October.
Okay.
That right.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's been made and seconded. The motion is for the delay of 30 days to actually put a date of the third Monday in October, which would be October, what was that?
21st.
October 21st. So that is the motion on the table. It has been seconded. All those in favor, Mr. Evans?
No vote. I can't see what, as far as the minimum, I was told, or I cannot...
This is, Mr. Evans, this is for to delay a conditional use. We have not gone to minimum housing...
I'm sorry, I could barely hear you, sir.
Mr. Evans, it is for item 3C to delay that public hearing until October 21st at the request of the petitioner.
Oh, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on to Mr. Hatcher, Mr. Evans has expressed that he is not comfortable voting because he cannot see. Can he abstain on these votes?
I think out of these circumstances, the board could certainly vote to allow him to abstain.
Mr. Evans, is that okay with you?
That's fine. That's fine, sir.
Okay, we need an official vote? Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that because of Mr. Evans being telephonically involved in this and cannot see the evidence that he be allowed to abstain from the following votes. Okay, all those in favor? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Thanks.
You have the excuse of voting on the minimum housing code, Mr. Evans.
Okay, Mr. Hatcher, thank you.
Good evening. Our first case is MH 104, 2013. This property is located on Belzky Court. It's a single ride mobile home and it's become a public nuisance due to the interior damage that's going on it. We're seeking immediate demolition of this property and we also have a consent to demolish. The property owner has consented to let us demolish this property.
Madam Clerk, do we have speakers for this?
Not for this case, no, sir.
Okay, well, I'm gonna open the public hearing and then I will close the public hearing. You'll entertain a motion.
All right. I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing expected as the true facts in this case and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days and to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action and direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher, next item is case number MH 35-2013.
This property is located at 7910 Pine Bluff Court. It's a burned out structure and we're seeking immediate demolition of this property.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Do we have speakers, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers.
I will close...
I'm here on behalf of City Mortgage. My paralegal should have called and spoke with the commissioner before. I apologize. But I'm here on behalf of the respondent, as their attorney.
We didn't sign up. Do you have documentation that you sent in? Mr. Morphil?
Under these circumstances, yes, sir, I wouldn't even have signed it.
Sure. Please state your name.
Thank you. My name is Mark Asville. I'm an attorney with Brock and Scott from Charlotte. I'm here on behalf of the record owner of this property, City Mortgage. As the commission has seen, this is a dilapidated structure. Normally, under these types of circumstances, my client would have already demolished a structure in such shape. I'll just give you a real quick background on how we got here today. This was a property that was owned by a couple and they fell behind on their mortgage sometime in 2009. Foreclosure proceedings were filed in 2011. Right around the time that the foreclosure sale occurred, the house caught on fire. This was in 2000, very end of 2012. Some uncertain circumstances about what happened with the fire. The insurance company has refused to pay the claim to City Mortgage, who is now the owner of the property. They would have been insured under the deed of trust when the property was mortgaged and they should have been the beneficiary of the proceeds of the insurance policy. So what we have right now is we have a property that was a $300,000 property. My client paid $300,000 at the foreclosure sale for. It was caught on fire under mysterious circumstances. No charges of arson have been filed, but the insurance company's failing to pay it out. We're not asking this commission to not demolish the structure. All I'm asking for is a little bit more time. One, so we can get someone from Allstate out of the property and adjuster to perform an evaluation on the property for the benefit of City Mortgage. And two, my client would be much more interested in demolishing the structure themselves rather than having the county have to send someone out, institute a lien against the property, go through all the normal procedures. We'd rather demolish it ourselves, but we just need a little bit more time. And as such, I would ask the commission that if you, you know, grant this order of demolition, your ordinance, that you would give my client 90 days before it's demolished instead of 30.
How long, Mr. Hatcher, how long has it been in this state?
Joan Finley was the inspector out there, but I believe it's been a year.
September of 2012.
September, so when?
That's when the fire occurred.
Is this in the neighborhood?
Yes, it is.
It's off of Elliott Bridge Road and Foxwood or Fox Run subdivision out there.
Is it a safety habit or a nuisance, health hazard as it is now?
Yes.
Commissioner, we've received numerous complaints regarding this property over the last five to six months.
Ms. Finley, if you're gonna speak, would you be sworn in?
We've received numerous...
We need to be sworn in.
I need to swear you in, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We've received a large number of complaints regarding this property. Individuals were notified that this was coming before the board tonight from the neighborhood that have complained. Actually, one of the individuals who did not show up tonight, but I have spoken with regularly, actually has put their house on the market because of the condition of the adjoining property.
I don't doubt it. Does any commissioners have any questions for the attorney or minimum housing personnel?
Now, my only question is, 90 days seems a little long for me.
And I'm sorry, attorney, I got Mark, I didn't get your last name, but, you know, I don't think it's really fair for these neighbors to be put in this for a whole year. I don't know if I'm comfortable with 90 days. At this time, I'm willing to make a motion. All right, to adopt the order and report of the minimum housing expected as the true facts in this case and to order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 60 days, to order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, to direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in the ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same with the register of deeds. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion from commissioners? Okay, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next case is MH 67, 2013. This is property located at 1408 Shaw Road. This is a single family brick veneer dwelling located right along Shaw Road. It's fallen into disrepair. We're seeking immediate demolition of this property as well.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers in opposition.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker?
Our first speaker is Janet Whiting.
Good evening, Ms. Whiting.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair.
Good evening, Ms. Whiting.
I'll need to administer the oath to you, please.
Okay.
You'll put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I thank you for allowing me to ask for leniency and to ask for an extension of time. I live in Georgia and for the last five and a half years, I've been taking care of my mom. My mom passed away on August 25th. And at the risk of sounding cold, I do expect insurance money from that and I would like to take that insurance money and apply it to the fixing up of my father's house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whiting.
Whiting as in fish.
Oh, Whiting.
That's okay, Whiting as in fish.
Can I ask?
Yeah, you wanna ask Ms. Whiting?
Yes.
Ms. Whiting, Commissioner Melvin has a question for you.
Ms. Whiting, what timeframe were you asking him for?
If I can have 90 days, somewhere in that vicinity to kind of get everything settled and kind of move things in that direction, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Michael Whiting.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Whiting.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
Mr. Whiting, have you had a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I'm self-employed, contracted, been doing construction for about 25, 30 years. And we were in the process of getting this house right. The last month of the period that they gave us, we had removed the trees. We took all the growth off the house, moved about five or six trees that were growing right beside it, up against it. And that's when my mother went into ICU. And we had about three more weeks left before the period ended and like a week before the period ended, she died. So that's what threw us off as far as getting it a little bit more further than what you see now. But as my sister asks for the extended time, I'll be able to do the work on here because this house is not in a place that is beyond repair. It's just got eve damage, a little bit of structural in the rafters, a little bit of structure in the floor, but it's nothing that's beyond repair.
Thank you, Mr. Whiting.
I have a question, Mr. Hatcher. Looking at some of the pictures, are you willing to be able to issue the permits that are necessary?
Yes, ma'am. We're able to issue a renovation permit. The tax assessor has reduced that building to storage condition and reduced the value to $3,550.
Is there an estimated, excuse me, I'm sorry, is there an estimated...
At current construction costs, we estimate it to be $62,000 to repair that building.
All right, and now, Mr. Whiting, have you been in the process of securing the the permits that you need?
No, I didn't get a chance to get around that because we was trying to bring it up to par. And like I said, in the last three weeks of the period that they had given us, we had an issue with my mom and that just threw everything off.
Because this is in an area where, I don't know, we do receive calls. I don't know if the department has received calls or not, but we do receive calls.
And I can understand that.
About the condition of the property. But I understand you have a difficult situation.
The only comment I'd make is, you know, this is in a neighborhood and I believe the intentions of the family are good, but there needs to be, there needs to be some action on this. So anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner Melvin?
To adopt the order and report of the minimum housing expected as the true facts in this case and to order the property owner to remove, well, we need to go to a different one on that one. To adopt the order and report of the minimum housing expected as the true facts in this case, to order the property owner to rehabilitate the property within 90 days, to order the property owner to, let's see, that don't go, to order the inspector to rehabilitate the property or remove or demolish the dwelling. If the owner fails to do so, impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action. To order the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and order in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
The motion's been made and seconded. To all those people watching on TV, there is no audio problem?
There's an audio problem.
All right, I'm sorry, but thank you, Mr. Melvin. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Whiting, let's go to work. Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you.
Our next case is MH 69, 70, 2012. This property is owned by Clinton Graham located at 520 Pine Tree Lane in Spring Lake. This property was given a 75-day extension to remove this remaining debris and as of 12th September, that hasn't been accomplished. We're seeking immediate remediation of that property.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing.
We have no speakers.
I will close the public hearing. All right, Madam Chair.
I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing expected as the true facts in this case and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days and order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action and direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Yes, Commissioner King.
Can you go back for a second? I wanna see what's gonna be torn down.
It's actually, nothing's gonna be torn down, it's just gonna be removed. There's demolition, debris scattered.
This is Spring Lake?
Yes, sir, on Pine Tree Lane, right behind the Walmart.
This is the same people that we had up before?
Yes, sir.
And there's no explanation as to why it's been done?
No, sir.
So we're just moving ourselves and building?
Yes, sir. I'd like to point out, if I may, some of these properties that we've cleared out, it's enabled the property owner to actually sell it and move it and get our money back on it because we're gonna put this lien on the property before anybody buys it. We'll be able to recoup that money for it.
No one has a, when you had your meetings, no one showed up?
No, I believe they did show up, yes, sir, they did show up on... That hearing was on 28th of January, Renee Graham did attend the hearing. At that time, we gave them until April, which they did demolish the structures, but they haven't quite cleaned up the lot yet. We still have this remaining debris and it's quite vast.
That debris that's there right now, how much you think it'd cost to move that?
Three or $4,000.
How much is the land worth, you think? Just give me a swag.
Probably $150,000.
Oh, really?
It's quite a large acreage there.
Okay.
I could find those exact numbers for you, but I'm pretty sure we're in that neighborhood.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Next item, case number MH 72-2013.
This property is owned by Camilla Horns located at 1931 Middle Road in Eastover. And this is a house that appears that someone has begun unapproved renovations on and walked away from it. There's several accessory structures on the property. The tax assessor has this structure, utility condition, $6,060, $6. Estimated cost of repair, $120,000. We're seeking immediate demolition of this property.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
Close the public hearing.
I move that we adopt the order and report of the minimum housing expected as the true facts in this case and order the property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days and order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action and direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders in an ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the register of deeds.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher.
Thank you, Paul.
Our next public hearing is the Community Development Program, year 2012, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Mr. Martin, will you be?
Mr. Chairman, we have Ms. Sylvie McLean and Ms. De Taylor from the Community Development Department, who are both going to handle this, the background on this.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Keith and the Commissioners.
Good evening, Chairman King and the Commissioners.
Good evening.
Community Development has prepared, and we are pleased to present the two thousand and twelve Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is known as the CAPR. Cumberland County, as an urban entitlement designated by HUD, annually receives community development block grant funds and home investment partnership funds, and is also awarded continued care funds through a competitive process. In addition, the county also receives emergency solution grant funds, which is also awarded through a competitive process. Community Development has administered the PATH program, which is known as the Project in Assistance to Transition from Homeless this particular year. These programs are designed to address the priority needs in the areas of affordable housing, human services needs, and homeless services needs. The CAPR identified in the progress that was made in implementing the goals and objectives are outlined in our five-year consolidated plan and our annual action plan, which principally benefits the low and moderate income persons in Cumberland County. This CAPR marks our third year of our consolidated plan. During the past year, we engaged many activities and services such as housing, homeless, public service, and public facilities in meeting the objectives in the consolidated plan. The performance reporting meets three basic purposes. It provides, this report provides HUD the necessary information to meet statutory requirements, it provides information for HUD's annual report to Congress, and it provides the grantee an opportunity to describe to the citizens the successes in revitalizing the communities and meeting the objectives in the consolidated plan. At this particular time, Ms. Taylor will present the programmatic accomplishments of the activities included in our two thousand and twelve CAPR.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Most of, go ahead, switch this, okay. Most of Community Development's entitlement funds go towards providing affordable and decent housing. The Housing Rehabilitation Program has been a major activity undertaken by Community Development. The Housing Rehabilitation Program provides financial assistance in the form of a deferred loan to eligible homeowners to assist with repairing substandard housing. Through the Housing Rehab Program, Community Development expended five hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to assist thirteen homeowners with housing repairs. Another housing activity similar to the Housing Rehab Program is the Emergency Repair Program, which offers financial assistance in the form of a grant to qualified homeowners in need of assistance to address those repairs that are a safety or health risk to the occupants. Through this program, Community Development expended over forty-two thousand to assist ten homeowners with emergency repairs. Community Development also offers a low-interest loan to investors to assist in repairing substandard housing. Once the unit is renovated, the investor must rent the unit to an income-eligible tenant for a minimum of three years. Five investors were able to receive assistance in a total amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars to provide affordable housing to five eligible tenants. The Urgent Repair Program is similar to the Emergency Repair Program in that it addresses repairs that are...